Evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, February twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, seven P. M., Board Meeting Room at thirty-nine Bank Street Southeast, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McClusser, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here. Would you all join me in a moment of silence and then we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving to item five. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple here.
Yes, sir. Will be Ms. Ingram?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. There come motion to remove items seven J., seven K., seven O., seven P., and eleven A. From the agenda. And also add fire and rescue memorial and litter collection to matters from the work session.
All right, where would that be added, Ms. Ingram?
That is going to be...
New business?
It's gonna be thirteen A. and B.
Thirteen A. and B., okay.
Yeah.
Good deal. Thank you. All right, you got a motion, got a second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion on emotion? Not hearing any, and we're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving to item six, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll for motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion by Mr. Tucker, second by Mr. Ingram. Any further discussion? None, we're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving to item seven, the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
All right, Mr. Bowman, thank you, sir. Got a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Height, thank you, sir. Um, any further discussion on emotion? None, we're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimously. All down to item eight, presentations. We'll move to the front of the floor, gentlemen, for the presentations.
Is, uh... Is Miss Lauren Folks here? Come on down, Lauren. How you doing? Good to see you. Any family members with Lauren? Come on down. Come on down. Y'all just hand me the microphone and expect me to know what I'm doing? I'll just start preaching then. Okay. I have a certificate of excellence to present to Ms. Lauren Folks. Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its sincere appreciation and admiration to you for your outstanding bravery and heroism displayed on December the seventh, two thousand twenty-three. As you rushed to provide the Heimlich maneuver to one of your first grade students, ultimately saving his life. The courage you displayed during this event is remarkable, and you are the true definition of a local hero. Thank you again for your courageous efforts, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors. Given this twentieth day of February, two thousand twenty-four, Eddie L. Height, Junior, Dan River Supervisor, and Darrell W. Dalton, Chairman.
Thank you very much for recognizing me and for this. I feel honored.
Thank you. And folks, Lauren is one of the reasons not only that young man is still here today, but she showed her students, when you see something happening, do something, get involved. You know, we all don't have to save somebody's life, but if you see somebody in need, that's what it's about, helping out, helping that person. And I want to thank you not only for doing that, but for what you do for our young people as a teacher in our system. And we have all seen the incredible test scores. It's because of people like yourself, not just our teachers, but all of our educators. We're so thankful for them, and we really do appreciate everything that you do for our county.
Good job, Eddie. Did a good job. All right, now we moving down to item eight B. We got our youth commission introduction presentation by Ms. Kelsey Myers. Welcome, Ms. Myers.
Good evening.
Put, make sure your mic's down where he can hear you good.
There you go. Good evening. I'm Kelsey Myers, the Recreation Program Assistant for Pennsylvania County Parks and Recreation, and serve as Chairman of the Pennsylvania County Youth Commission. As Chairman of the Youth Commission, I would like to state our mission and introduce our two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four members. The primary mission of our Youth Commission is to act as a voice for the Pennsylvania County youth and serve as a link between students, elected county officials, and the Board of Supervisors. Our Youth Commission also sponsors various service projects throughout the year and helps organize and publicize countywide high school social events to help build a sense of community among all students living in Pennsylvania County. We have Shamaria Jones from Chatham High School, Gracie Johnson, which is online at Liberty University, Brady Slattery from Tunstall High School, and Amari White from Dan River High School. Thank you. And if y'all don't mind, we're gonna get them to turn around and take a picture.
That's fine.
Do we need to come down? Thank you. Hey, Kelsey, do we need to come down front and take a picture with them?
Behind them. I don't blame you. Picture be whole a lot better.
Yeah. I didn't know if they wanted to have, that's fine, that's great.
Good job, good job. Yep.
That's good. Thank you. Moving to item nine, hearing of the citizens. Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name or district in all the tone of voice for the record, unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the hearing of the citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum forty-five minutes. Any individual that signs up to speak during said session who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Do we have anyone signed up, Ms. McClusser?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Brenda Bowman?
Welcome, Ms. Bowman.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Bowman, and I reside in the Chatham Blair's District. Good evening, Chairman Dalton, board members, staff, and citizens. I have been planning to come and speak to you all for some time about the litter problem in the county. I was unaware that this topic was going to be discussed at another meeting today until Mr. Bowman brought it to my attention. He knew I was planning on speaking tonight on this issue. I tried to reach out to Mr. Ingram but was unable to reach him. I could not attend the meeting today to discuss it with him, but I did listen online. So I thank you, Mr. Ingram, for bringing this continuing problem to light. I would like to give the board some background on how this problem has been tackled in the past and offer some suggestions. Twelve years ago, the Board of Supervisors developed a beautification committee, and each supervisor appointed a citizen from their district to that committee. That committee spearheaded countywide cleanup months throughout the community in April and October. Even members of the Board of Supervisors participated in the cleanups alongside citizens from neighborhoods, churches, schools, and civic groups and our youth commission. Several Saturdays were also declared, "Take your trash to the landfill on us." The board approved the wa- waiving the tipping fees on certain dates for citizens who brought their large debris to the landfill for disposal at no cost. The board partnered with the Chamber of Commerce by establishing the S. T. O. P., Stop Students Taking on Pennsylvania Litter Program, and gave a stipend to student service clubs at the four high schools who participated in the cleanups and recognized them publicly. Several businesses also took it upon themselves to match the stipends given to the schools, and the students also received community service hours. The county had a grant writer who ensured that we received funds from the state each year to pay for orange vests and large trash bags. The grant writer coordinated with V. Dot to retrieve the bags left on the sides of the roads following the collections. As part of educating the public, especially our young people, the first poster contest was held for elementary school students to create posters with the theme, "Keeping Our Community Clean." Prizes were awarded, winners were recognized at a Board of Supervisor meeting, and winning posters were displayed in the lobby of the admin building. Most citizens and businesses do police their own property, and there is the Adopt a Highway Program in which civic groups and businesses participate, but we need to do more.
Thirty seconds remaining.
So I, I'm almost done. So I do not appear before you to complain because this issue is not a fault of the supervisors, but ask that you take this serious. We need to show travelers, visitors, and prospective industry that Pennsylvania County takes pride in its appearance. So I offer the following suggestions for your consideration. Show your community you mean business by reestablishing a beautification committee. Appoint a citizen from each of, each of your districts for that committee.
Three minutes is complete.
Ensure a staff member is still applying for and receiving grant money for cleanup supplies. And for fun, supervisors could challenge their colleagues on the board to participate in a cleanup within their district and perhaps present a trophy to the district who nets the most filled trash bags. Step-up coordination with V. Dot and Sheriff's Department for additional pickups. Implementing some of these suggestions come at no cost to the county. However, I do support this board's motion earlier for the county staff to look into the cost of hiring outside contractors or part-time help and to look into assistance from the maintenance department. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Do we have one that has signed up, Ms. McClusser?
Wayne Robertson?
Welcome, Mr. Robertson.
My name is Wayne Robertson. I'm a resident of Mr. Bowman's District, Chatham Blair's District. As I said last time, I really appreciate your being willing to serve on the Board of Supervisors. What you're doing is really important. It really, really is important, local government. I also told you last time that I am opposed to that proposed new jail because we already have two jails, and it costs a whole lot less to do some renovation than it does to build a new jail. I want to tell you about another reason that I'm opposed to that new jail. It's unlikely, I think, that somebody will escape from that jail, but if some criminal thug or scalawag does escape from the jail, where's a good place to find some hostages? A school, and there are two schools across the road from that proposed jail site, Chatham Middle School and the Vocational Technical School. Is anybody concerned about school safety anymore? This whole idea needs to be scrapped and thrown out, and I'd like one of you to champion the cause of doing that, getting rid of the whole idea of getting a new jail, and it's time for the rest of y'all to go along with that. I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John Owen?
Welcome, Mr. Owen.
My name is John Owen. I'm from the Callens Prep district. If not for the fact that Pennsylvania County was given free of charge, fully functioning, and furnished detention facility, I wouldn't be here today. But the fact is, they were. It was given to the county, and the county gave it back because they didn't want it. Now you want to spend millions of dollars on a new jail. This was ten years ago. I contacted my supervisor, I emailed him about plans for funding for this proposed jail, and he was a little confused or evasive, so maybe I can help you a little bit. Article seven, section ten, paragraph B of the state constitution states how the county can borrow money or vote a referendum. It's the way I read. You know, I just got a Pennsylvania County education, but I said, "Best I can read." Now, if you think the taxpayers are gonna pass a referendum for a jail after learning about Camp fifteen being given back, you probably live in a dream world. Don't make it my personal mission to inform as many voters as possible about this. At the appropriate times, letters to the editor, social media, outreach, paid ads in the newspaper, whatever it takes, should be expected. What I'm asking for now is for y'all to stop throwing this money away that you're throwing at it now because it's so unlikely that this referendum will ever be passed in my lifetime because I'm gonna raise a stump. The other issue is with its secrecy, that this whole process is entailed. You were elected to represent the people of this county. Inform them with the facts, not what you want them to hear. Put the facts out there about Camp fifteen and about why y'all want to spend millions of dollars, hour of money. Just put the truth out there and let the public make an informed decision on this matter. Don't whitewash it, just put it out there as it is. I'd like to thank you for your time. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Owen.
Shelby?
Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
For the Dan Rivers, okay. So you're okay. All right, thank you.
Do we have someone else, Ms. McClusser?
Yes, sir. Gwendolyn and Darrell Everett, and they're signed up under one. What's that? I'm sorry. Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, sir, welcome.
This is my wife, Gwendolyn Everett, and I'm Darrell Everett, and we in the Dan River district with Mr. Height. We here today on old business. We was here December the fifth for rezoning, and it was pass sixty to zero to go up to you all to the board. On January the sixteenth, we came for the zoning, and Mr. Height motioned to deny with our calls. We had to call Emily, you all had to call Emily back to find out why. So we ended up that day postponing it to today. Well, during that time, Mr. Hunt had told me and my wife to look at the list of proffers so that me and Ms. Tate could try to remain friends. So later, that coming week, Emily called my wife and said that she had our papers to sign. So we went to view the paper. It was saying that we could only do the proffers, we only could do daycare, that's it. Just it, just daycare. So we disagreed with that. So I asked her for the, where's the list of proffers that we could do? So she said, "I will get them for you." So she got us the list of proffers, and also we was avai- advised to try to work with the county because everybody liked to see everybody trying to work together. So what we did out of a hundred and five proffers, we narrowed it down to twenty-six. So we had a meeting with Mr. Height, Mr. Hunt, and Emily, and everybody agreed, Mr. Height said that he could get with Ms. Tate and Mr. Barker, and he think he can get it passed. Emily told Mr. Hunt that she was gonna motion to have it approved. Well, then we get a call last week, Tuesday, saying that we need a site plan. So we were like, we didn't know about no site plan. We were just there two weeks ago in a meeting, nobody said anything about a site plan, but no problem, we'll work on it. We called Ms. Wendy, she said, "I'm gonna try to work you all in and get it in," and she did. She got it in, we emailed it to Mr. Height and Emily on Friday. I knew you all would close Monday. Yeah, but anyway...
Thirty seconds remaining.
Anyway, come to find out, we came to sign the proffer letter today, and they said it's been pulled. What will happen today? And the reason being was Emily told us to get the site plan so that we wouldn't have to get rescheduled. And come to find out, now it's been pulled. And I don't know, we, I know that daycare is needed. The ci- the county said that they promote small businesses. That's what we trying to do. We talked to a lot of companies, they said that people won't come to work. We talked to the people, they said they can't get daycare. So we know it's a need. And now find out today, Mr. Height said he just found out today that it was getting pulled, and come to find out Emily tells us today that we got to start the whole process over again. Why? We, we just concern citizens, you know, it's, to us, it's like... We just concern citizens, you know, it's, to us, it's like one hurdle after another. And we don't understand and we just, I don't know, I don't, we don't know what's going on. And Emily informed us today that it'll probably be April. Why we have to, if it's already been passed one time, 6 to 0, why we got to start it over? Thank you all for hearing us out. Y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Phyllis Barker.
She can speak, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Phyllis Barker. I live in the Dan River district. I've actually taken a day off of work with the intention of addressing the proposed rezoning of Little Creek Road, which I live on. And it was going from a residential to a B2 business general. I won't go into detail because I am understanding that this has been put on a different docket, it's on a different agenda.
That is correct.
So I won't go into any of that. But I just wanted to be noted that I was in attendance. So when my supervisor asked me, when I go into work tomorrow night, I say, yes, sir, I was there. And I just wanted to let it be noted that I am an opponent of the rezoning as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Tate.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Mine's not very long. I didn't think we were going to speak, so.
All right, that's fine. You're okay. Thank you.
My name is Shelby Tate, and I'm from the Dan River district. I own property across the road from Mr. and Ms. Avery, 104 Little Creek and 968 Little Creek Road. I'm in full support of Mr. Barker and Ms. Barker and other residents of Little Creek Road in opposing the rezoning of the above-captured property we're talking about, going from an R1 residential to a B2 business. In our petition to ask for denial of this rezoning, I have done some research on the GIS system of Pennsylvania County and found that there were 54 residents on Little Creek Road. And of this listing, three of them are business general B2, two are multifamily, two agricultural A1, 14 are residential suburban, the Ethel Moon Estate is the way they listed it then, and it's a R1, and 33 others are residential combined R1. The first letter that I got from the community development showed that Avery's were asking for rezoning to daycare. However, when the letter came around announcing the meeting day for planning zoning, it had changed to B2 business district and has remained that since even for this meeting tonight. At the initial meeting of the zoning committee, I appeared before them in opposition to that rezoning. I asked for a proffer from the vet Avery's to rezone to continue just their daycare center. According to observation of traffic entering and exiting this property weekly and in the mornings and evenings, they appear to be currently operating an unlicensed daycare center now. They may not have to be licensed because they may not have enough. There's an internet ad that lists Ms. Gwendolyn Avery with a maximum capacity of 12 children. There's also another ad on Facebook under the name of Little Princes and Princes, which shows open now. And both of these facilities use the landline number of the Avery's. And in these statements, Gwendolyn Avery herself says that she's been doing this for 17 years. My question now is if they are already operating a daycare at this property already in half a year, why do they need to rezonate if their intentions are still just the same for daycare? In Gwendolyn Avery's recent proffer, Mr. Avery didn't sign it, it come from Gwendolyn, she lists 21 or more different business establishments that say the property would only be used for. The question comes to mind why there are so many choices when clearly daycare is on these options. They eliminated some of the other choices but still left 21 that they could put in that facility. Also, that pleased the need for a daycare center in Pennsylvania County. I do not have a number, but there are several home daycare centers now that are exempt license within the area. Finally, I would like to ask if they do have just customers from the county and not the city. I'm questioning that if they only have city customers use their address, then the children can go to the county schools. The county government would then lose their tax revenue. I urgently request that the Board of Supervisors deny this rezoning for all the reasons that I have brought forth this evening and in keeping with your duty to look toward the interest of the community and not just one resident. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McCloskey. Moving to item TNA, public hearing and rezoning for public hearings pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance. The Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues, zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting health, safety, and the general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all the decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Case R-24-001, Ms. Ragsdale.
Good evening, Ms. Ragsdale.
Welcome.
Case R-24-001, James and Betty Garrett have petitioned to rezone 2.952 acres located on State Road 841 Steel Meadow Road in the Callens Gretna election district from R1 residential suburban subdivision district to A1 agricultural district to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zone A1. On January 4th, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a 6 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summaries and closes the board packet. Mr. Chairman James Garrett is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. At 7:36, I'll open the public hearing in case R-24-001. Ms. McCloskey, do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. At 7:36, I'll close the public hearing in case R-24-001. Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, this is in your district and you did ask if I would take care of this. In case R-24-001, make a motion approving the rezoning of 2.952 acres from the R1 residential suburban subdivision district to A1 agriculture district to allow the property to be subdivided. And, Ms. Chairman, that is my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Got to go second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingram. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, we're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimous. The property is being rezoned. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for coming.
Moving to item.
Y'all welcome to leave too if you didn't need to stay.
B, other public hearings. Each person addressing the board on the public hearing should step up and give his or her name and district and his or her place of residence for non-county citizens in an all in tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for the group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board has affirmed and given the extended speaker a allotted time. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Public hearings or budget amendments, Ms. Vanderheide. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here before you because we need to make a budget amendment for the FY24 budget. Even though we're working on FY25, sometimes you still need to make adjustments to your current budget. And so the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2507 allows for any locality to make said adjustments. If they exceed 1%, however, you all must advertise that public hearing in a newspaper so that citizens have input so that they can see what these amendments are all about. So tonight's adjustment is primarily the state funding that was awarded to us back in September, and we're just now getting the details of how that money needs to be spent. So I wanted to go over those briefly. The total of this amendment is actually $9,555,243. And as I said, it's mostly state revenue. So we are receiving a total of $328,139 from the state compensation board, which will be added to our general fund budget to fund our constitutional officers for increases that they received in December. Then we have school state revenue of $5,877,104, and that's all additional state revenue that's coming to our school board. Does not require a local match from you all. We have sufficient local match already in our budget. The last item that we're adding is the 1% school sales tax revenue that we anticipate to get through the end of this fiscal year. That total is $3350,000, and that is added to our 1% school sales tax fund for those projects for our schools. So those are those three items that total the $9,555,243. And after tonight's public hearing, you all will be able to vote on this amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide.
Kim, you need a motion in this form or anything?
I got to open up a public hearing.
After you do the.
Okay, I got you. I got you.
At 7:40 PM, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up, Ms. McCloskey?
I only have Gwendolyn and Darryl Avery, but it's listed as rezoning. That's okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's it.
All right, so you're fine. Do you have anyone else signed up?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. At 7:40 PM, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll go ahead and make the motion, Mr..
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Dudley.
I'll make a motion approving the FY24 county budget amendments totaling $9,555,243 as presented by Ms. Kim.
Motion by, second.
Second, then we do discussion.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Tucker. Any discussion on the motion?
Please, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Kim, if you don't mind, the $5 million plus that you mentioned there for the schools?
Yes.
Right. Now, was that, and this is just for clarification, was that factored into last year's budget as an anticipated amount of funding coming in? Or how did that?
No, if you will remember, and maybe you weren't following it that much, but we did not have a state budget. They only approved what we called a skinny budget.
Right.
And so we worked off of the skinny budget numbers that did not include this funding. So they didn't actually approve the FY24 budget until FY24 had gotten started.
So.
So therefore, we approved a budget that had less money in it because we just didn't know what we were getting.
And you didn't know until actually?
After the fiscal year began.
So is that a possibility this could happen this year?
Could. Very possible because right now.
We don't have a budget currently.
We don't have a state budget, and you know, there are several versions.
That's right.
Of that state budget. And so it could take months before they decide on anything.
So that's kind of the clarification I need because we're going to approve a budget in April.
Right.
And so this could very well be.
Happen again.
Yeah, so September. Okay, good. That's what I needed. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
Any more comments? Any more discussion? All right. We're ready to vote, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Dudley.
You didn't have anything, Ms. Tucker.
Can I get your vote?
Mr. Who?
Mr. Dudley.
Okay. Mine was yes, but I did vote and I clicked on it.
Mr. Whittle. Oh, it's up here now. There we go.
So thank you.
Are we good? All right. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. All right, we're moving to item 12, new business. Do we have any new business, Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
All right. Item 13, matters from the work session. A, memorial site for the fine rescue memorial.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. I have two motions. I'll do 13A first.
Okay.
I make a motion authorizing county staff to determine the next steps to locate a fine rescue memorial on county-owned land adjacent to the Pennsylvania County Schools Victory Academy in the town of Chatham.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ingram, second by Mr. Dudley. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote.
Okay, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
And Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. Thank y'all. Moving to 13B.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, sir. I make a motion authorizing county staff to investigate the feasibility of potentially hiring two employees to combat litter in the county and return a related recommendation to the Board of Supervisors in the near future.
I got a motion by Mr. Ingram.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion?
I did just want to make the comment. I said during the meeting we had earlier today that we've been accused of kicking a can down the road, but this is a trash can, we're not going to kick it anymore. Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
Any more discussion on the motion? If none, we're ready to vote, gentlemen.
Who made that second? Mr. Dalton?
I did.
Yeah, Mr. Tucker. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Ingram made the motion and Mr. Tucker seconded it.
Okay. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
And Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. Thank y'all. Moving to item 14, our board members' reports. Mr. Murray, do you have anything to report on, sir?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good?
I'm always good, man.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I've just got a few, just a report to the citizens on what I've done in the past few weeks. So I attended the Chamber of Commerce annual meeting on February 1st at the Institute, which included over 400 leaders in businesses. We had our very own Todd Haymore there to speak to us about foreign and domestic trade and along with Matt Rowe and Coria Boebe from Pennsylvania County Economic Development. So, and also, it was very nice to see the Minister of Economics from the Japanese Embassy there to speak also. So great meeting and very, give kudos to Lynda Green for her work and Ann Moore Sparks for her work also. After the adjournment, I went to Richmond to attend the ACO conference up there, met with some of our elected officials, and congratulations to those folks that won the election. On, let's see, also, I went to three of the four, and I apologize to, I think it was Gretna's High School's Freedom of Choice Ceremony. I did not make it there, but I did make it to Tunstall, Chatham High, Dan River High School. And I'll tell you what, that was, those were some great programs. If you did not attend those in person, I think you might be able to see those online. So the folks that put that together, the committee there, did an absolute wonderful job. So please try to catch that on, I think it may be on YouTube. Also, I went to the UFRFA meeting this past week and also attended, which hadn't been done in a while, the Local Emergency Planning Organization in Danville, Virginia. This next one's coming up in April. It'll be here at the Community Center. Great information there with our local first responders. And also, I mentioned during the work session, in case you didn't catch that, the Route 41 study, there's a community meeting that's going to take place March the 25th at 5:30 at the Mount Herman Fire Department on the Route 41. And so we're asking the public's input on that, so make sure you put that on your calendar and hopefully you will be able to attend that. Other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Whittle gave me his time, so you bear with me. But I too attended the Chamber's annual breakfast and as well as ATDM graduation. That was 80 young and old men and women alike that graduated, many of which will be welders that will soon be working on our next-generation submarines. And who would have thought that this little community would play such an important part in national security? But at the chamber breakfast as well as ATDM graduation, the need for housing came up again. So if you're still against housing, just please understand that we're in a crisis, so to speak, for need for affordable housing, and that's coming. I had the honor of being elected chairman of UFRFA, which is a regional industrial facilities authority. It's a joint endeavor between the city and the county. We. We collectively own the Berry Hill Mega Park as well as the other parks, including Kane Creek. And a lot of people are whispering something good is coming. Well, I'm not going to whisper that. Something good is coming, but that's all I can say about that. I'm so proud to be a graduate of Tunstall High School. As I tell those young men and women, I'm a '75 graduate, or '75 model, Willie. And we have a phenomenal ball team, basketball that is, and I'm not sure if they won tonight, but they are headed to state finals. They were Piedmont Regional District champs, and Jamarcus Brown scored over 1,000 points during his reign, if you will. And I thought that set a county record, but then I found out that a guy named Anthony Parrish had scored over 3,000 points. So, congratulations to both of those. Brazel and Cascade Fire Department's had their annual awards ceremony, and I know that Chief Brian Draper is the new chief at Brazel, and Eric Clark is the chief at Cascade. I want to congratulate them and all the command staff. Mr. Adams is here. I want to thank you for being a great part of that organization as a member of the Board of Directors. I too attended the Freedom of Choice Program at Tunstall High School, and it was probably one of the most beautiful services or programs that I'd ever been to. Very fitting for those that endured that time period, and they should have never had them going through that, but I think we all collectively have learned through that. Tunstall's wrestling team, they're doing extremely well. I'm not sure where they stand right now, but they're doing very well. And I did want to congratulate our newest judge, Les Adams, on his appointment to the General District Court, and Judge Brian Turpin for being reappointed to the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court. So, having said that, I did have one more thing. 19 years ago, on the 26th of January, I just came back from my mama's funeral to discover that a young man named Jonathan Bowling, a Martinsville police officer and a member of the United States Marine Corps, as well as two other Marines, were killed overseas defending our country. And every year, I try to remember Jonathan and his family, Darryl Bowling, who's retired state trooper out of Patrick County. Just good people. So, anyway, having said that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Height?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This weekend, my wife and I were sitting at the house, and when I saw the news of the explosion in Loudoun County, and they lost a volunteer firefighter. And my wife and I were talking about how our volunteers are just that. Volunteers, a gentleman went into that fire expecting to come out, not paid for their duties, but they volunteer their time, and that reminded me of what they're willing to sacrifice for us as citizens. So, we just need to be sure we let our local volunteers know how much we do appreciate everything they're doing for us. It was kind of a wake-up call for me to, you know, when that happened. So, you know, to our volunteers, thank you. Thank you for all you do. And to our educators, we've got some of the best educators in the state of Virginia and Pennsylvania County. And I just want to thank them for working with our young people, and, you know, Pennsylvania County is a great county to live in. I'm honored to sit on this stage and represent this county. I'm not always going to make decisions that everybody agrees with, but that's life. We have to make some tough decisions sometimes. So, we do appreciate, and I do appreciate, all of you for coming out, for your comments. It means a lot to me to hear our citizens speak up about things that do concern them, and we really do, and I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Height. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And first, I'd like to express my gratitude to all of the staff that prepared and helped prepare these meetings. You actually make us look good. To the chairman, good meeting tonight. We've kind of been together all day. I also want to commend the Freedom of Choice Committee on a job well done, and, you know, it's been stated two or three times up here, and most people, if you did not attend, you really can't appreciate what it was really all about. And it is very befitting to celebrate during the month of Black History because in 1964, the freedom of choice was given to African-Americans whether they would want to send their children to white schools. And you cannot even fathom or imagine the bravery that it took on part of the parents and also the children to be the first to integrate these schools here in Pennsylvania County. So, they celebrated 60 years of that, so I salute them. It was wonderful ceremony, and as Mr. Bowman stated earlier, take a look at it online. I think you'd be imminently impressed, not only with, you know, their reflections, but also the music that was provided. All of us on this deal are working very, very hard for you as the citizens of Pennsylvania County. I was down in Richmond also, the first of this month at NACO, and, you know, not just going down to shake hands, but also, I went down prepared to work myself, Mr. Dalton. We were in the chairman's seminar. We were in classes all day long, and it was some wonderful, wonderful takeaways for us to bring back to try to help the county out. I'm excited about what's on the horizon for Pennsylvania County. I am, you know, part of the URFU Committee that works in collaboration with the city of Danville, and as Mr. Ingram has already shared, there's some good things coming down the pike, so I'm excited about that. And I say to all of us in this room, sometimes we get a little impatient, and we feel like, you know, things are not happening as fast as we would like them to happen, but we all have to have patience because in a lot of instances, these guardrails are in place to protect everybody. So, with that, I say good evening to everyone, and thank you again for coming out, all the citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. Thank you too for a good meeting.
Thank you.
You did well tonight, all day long. It's been a long day. Thank your staff. Thank all the folks that's come out. Thank Chuck Angier. He's been here all day long, and I mean that because Chuck's sitting here, and I know he's bored to death through a lot of it, but thank you all for coming out. I saw something this week. It's a guy that I knew passed away just this week. His name's Greg Barber. Just be lifting his family up in prayer. Young man, 50 years old, worked with them. He worked at Southside several years while I was there, and just never know what people are going through. And let's just care enough to, you know, love them enough to talk to them or pray for them. So, let's just love one another and care about each other enough to reach out to them. There's some hurting people, and pray for his family. Think he was a volunteer firefighter, is that correct, I believe?
He was.
So, let's just be lifting these guys up too. Ms. Chairman, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I yield my time back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. I'd like to echo some of the same comments. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, or thank all of our staff for a great job they always do helping prepare these meetings. I had the honor today to attend the Amthor groundbreaking. Excited about that. It's in my district, town of Grutton Industrial Park. I want to thank the staff that come out. I know Matt Rowe was there, Ms. Holly Kazee, Kalins. Don't want to leave nobody out, but I want to thank everyone that had a part in preparing that because it's more than a notion to get these things ready and set up. So, again, thank everyone for that. Had the pleasure of attending the Grutton Fire and Rescue banquet. They're a great, wonderful bunch of people out there in Grutton, not only in Grutton, but all our volunteers, as Mr. Height has spoke early, how valuable they are. I mean, they're the greatest asset we have in Pennsylvania County because they waiting to save somebody's life or put a fire out. Very, very valuable. We appreciate everything they do. Also, I spent some time in Richmond. As Mr. Tucker stated earlier, we spent some pretty long hours down there, had some good conversations with our delegates, and hopefully, they'll understand where we at, and they're willing to help us. So, I'm looking for great things too in Pennsylvania County. And I know we've got a lot to vote on here and talk about, and the taxes is a big thing. We're getting ready to set a tax rate. And we all know, sitting up here, seven people has over 60,000 people right there in their hands, and when we make a decision, we can affect their livelihood in a bad way or a good way. So, we've got to keep in mind, we've got to pay our bills, but we've got to protect the people that pays the bills, and that's the citizens of Pennsylvania County. With that, that's all I have to say. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Excuse you. Mr. Terrell, do you have anything, sir?
Real briefly, broadband is coming. Okay, broadband is coming. It's just in phases. I'm looking at a map. Some of the phases are complete, and they're working on others. Just have a little patience. We're talking about 1,000 square miles, folks. So, it's coming. I just want to say, after the presentation, there are now 2,765 locations ready to be activated. If you're near a location or want to know if you're near, contact us. Go to the My River, River Street website or our website to activate because it's coming, and we're going to make it happen through this partnership. I want to thank Mr. Arnold for his leadership on helping to drive the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Hunt, you have any comments, sir?
No, sir. Let's go home.
All right. Thank you, sir. Meetings adjourned. Thank you.